All right, good evening. As our preliminary matter, this is Laura Kement. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Matt Dyer?
Here.
Kenny Mitchell?
Here.
Jim Hickey?
Here.
And Wes Bloss?
Here.
Great. And for the staff participating in our meeting, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greer Getson?
Here.
John Stanbrook?
Here.
Great. And for anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. I know Mr. Cutler's going to be, Representative Cutler's going to be a little bit late. Kate Fiedhoff?
Here.
Chief Mix?
Here.
Chief Thompson?
Yeah.
Arlene Diaz?
Here.
Gil Amato?
Here.
Gene Sullivan?
I'm going to be speaking for her. She's not on.
Okay, I wasn't sure. So will you be speaking for Todd Hassett as well, or is Todd joining us?
I'll be speaking for Todd as well.
Okay. And what about Beth?
I'll be speaking for Beth, too.
All right, well, you're going to be playing multiple roles this evening, then. We look forward to that.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. This open meeting of the Hanson Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meetings, ensuring public access to not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting tonight will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Hanson Board of Selectmen is convening by go-to-meeting teleconference as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. This meeting is also being recorded by Whitman-Hanson Cable Access. And before we kick it off, I just thought I'd go over a few meeting business ground rules. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. And before we do so, just go over a couple of things. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. And please hold any comments, questions, or motions until your name is called. In addition, as Ryan mentioned earlier, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And please try to speak as clearly as possible in a way that will help Greer generate accurate minutes. And that's pretty much it. Each vote will also be taken by a roll call, as we did last week. So with that, I hope you will all join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I also would ask you to join me in a moment of silence as we think about all the people that are out there helping us fight this, our own staff, our own first responders, all the nurses and doctors, and all the people showing up every day to keep the wheels spinning. So if you'd join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. And with that, Mr. Bloss, I'm going to turn it over to you for the public announcements and upcoming meetings.
Volunteers are meeting on the following committees: 200th anniversary, Conservation Commission regular and two associate members, Cultural Council, Disabilities, Economic Development, Finance, Highway Building Committee, Historical Commission, Memorial Day Pathic Observance, Memorial Field Trustees, North River Commission, and Zoning Board Ultimate. Applications for appointment and info on the committees are available on the town website, www.hanson-ma.gov. Upcoming meetings, Tuesday, April 14th, Tuesday, April 21st, and Tuesday, April 28th, Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bloss. With that, we will begin with our new business, and we have many topics related to the coronavirus. And the first up is our coronavirus emergency preparedness update. I thought probably I would kick it over to you, Mr. Stanbrook, and then you can call upon Chief Mix, Chief Thompson, our health agent, Gil Amato, and the Board of Health Chair, Arlene Diaz, to provide updates.
Okay, thank you very much. So just as far as a preparedness update, we've been meeting regularly, the emergency preparedness group. It's our police chief, our fire chief, our board of health agent, and myself, Greer, my assistant, and recently in our last meeting was the board of health chairman. And we've been going over, you know, just situational awareness of where we are and keeping ourselves updated. I mean, I have what I'd like to say, but I'd probably just start off with maybe the police chief, Chief Mix, if he wants to give a quick update of what he can share with us as far as the preparedness and what we're doing here in town to combat the virus.
Thank you. As John just said, we've been meeting regularly, the fire chief and I, and the board of health agent are talking daily anyways, if not multiple times a day. One of the things that is going on is the Department of Public Health, almost two weeks ago, allowed us, allowed the Department of Health, or the Board of Health, to give us the positives, so we know what addresses we're going in to help keep the first responders safe. As the 911 center is in the police station, I coordinate that and keep in touch with Chief Thompson, usually multiple times a day, actually. That system seems to be going well. That helps allow us to control our use of personal protection equipment, to be a little more conservative with it. We have enough on hand right now, but there's a thing called the burn rate. We're not sure what the burn rate's going to be, which is how fast you use it. We are tracking it now, and we're doing fine. But again, that's something that Chief Thompson and I discuss daily. As far as impacts on the police department, as I've publicly put out, we've moved more towards like a security role in policing, where we're constantly checking the public buildings, CVS, Shaws, trying to keep people from gathering. I was at the bike park just a little while ago, reminding some people there. It's nice to see people outside, but they got to maintain their distance and utilize the area smartly, so that we don't continue on the spread of this virus. I still have people walking in the station. We're trying to do as much as we can remotely. A lot of it has been transferred over to emails, phone calls. So if anybody listening out there comes in, and don't be offended when we tell you, when you walk in the lobby, we'll take your phone number, listen to your problem, and tell you to go sit in your car. We're trying to interact outside as much as possible to keep that safe distance. Otherwise, we're doing okay budget-wise. It's costing a little bit of money, but I'm managing that within my budget right now. And we're tracking everything in the hopes of maybe getting reimbursed in the future. Anybody got any questions?
Oh, that's great. So when you talk about reimbursement, you're talking about like FEMA, or if MEMA ends up reimbursing local towns for the expenses that they've incurred as part of this?
That's correct. So we've been keeping, we keep track of all the potential reimbursable expenditures.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
I did, I will, if you don't mind, I'll just go around to the members and see if anybody had a question. Mr. Dyer?
Nope, I don't have any questions. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Okay. Mr. Hickey?
Nope, I'm all set. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Bloss?
Thanks, chief. Nope, good.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now, just like to move on to Fire Chief Thompson. Do you want to just give a quick update on your area and some of the things that you can share with, you know, about the virus and what we're doing?
Sure, thank you, John. Just to reiterate, great cooperation amongst all of us. We talk pretty much daily. One of the big concerns we have moving forward is having enough PPE, depending on what that burn rate's going to be. We've been able to get some good contacts up at MEMA, and we're tracking it very closely. And in anticipation of shortfalls, we're putting in orders early. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some. As far as the fire department goes, we've pretty much stopped access. People aren't coming in. They've been advised to call. As far as emergency operations go, it seems to be changing for us on a daily basis. We have conference calls with our medical director, conference calls with MEMA, with the Department of Public Health, and it just seems that on a daily basis, I'm adding a new notice or guideline for our members to protect themselves, their families, and our residents. So it's very fluid. However, the employees have been in great adapting. We actually brought our third ambulance up, that's our backup ambulance, and we're using that specifically for any COVID-related calls, to be able to just cut down on disinfecting the other ambulances with the tools we have. And we've basically just been following the guidance of our medical director. So other than that, I will say that our budget is fine right now. We don't have a lot of people taking vacation time, and I don't want to jinx us, but our calls are down. A lot of people that would go to the hospital for, let's say, simple things, aren't calling us because they're being told to call their primary care physician. So our calls are down a little bit, but we have been steady with some flu-like symptoms and some possible COVID calls, which can take up some time when we have to get back and disinfect the ambulances and all our apparatus. So other than that, I guess we'll just continue to monitor and work together and get through this thing. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, well, you know, we thank you, and we thank Chief Mix, and please thank all of your staff for, you know, for everything that they're doing. I will turn, I will again kind of go through the gamut here. Mr. Dyer, any questions?
Nope, not at this time, and thank you for your service.
Thanks, Matt.
Mr. Mitchell? Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Nope, thanks, chief.
Mr. Bloss?
Thanks, chief.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Right back to you, John.
Okay, thank you. Then, Health Agent Gil Amato, and after that, probably Chairman of the Board of Health, Arlene Diaz. Then just kind of give what you can about the health aspect of this virus.
Okay, Gil Amato, Health Agent. The role of the Health Agent through all this is to make sure everybody adheres to the rules and regulations set down by the Board of Health, and make sure everybody follows things such as the CVS stores, the convenience stores, businesses, restaurants, making sure they all follow the governor's orders that are sent down to the Department of Public Health, to the local boards of health. And I think we've had great cooperation, police chief, fire chief. You know, we're all out there, we're all paying attention. All businesses, restaurants, or whatnot, they are compliant. We've done compliance checks all over the place, as far as distancing. And the biggest thing about this is social distancing. You know, prevention is the best method here, and it's been proven over and over. And I think everybody's all aware of it. You know, the citizens of Hanson, I feel they've done a good job. We've had nobody in noncompliance. Everybody complies. I mean, the communication, the police chief, myself, and the fire chief is astronomical. I've lived in this town my whole life, and I've never seen it like that. And I feel really proud to be the Health Agent and a citizen of Hanson for the communication that is going on. I think Hanson is in a good position. You know, we don't have nursing homes, we don't have, you know, old soldiers home. We're pretty much spread out. We're under 10,000 population. And I think as long as everybody stays in compliance, you know, stay safe, safe distance, and pay attention. And, you know, we'll be, we'll make it through this. I mean, it's going to ramp up, we realize that, but, you know, we have to deal with it, and we deal with it the best way we can. Let the citizens of Hanson know that you've got a great fire department, police department, and I'm out there making compliance. I'm constantly watching. She's out there watching, and we can make it through this. We just got to stick together and stay compliant.
Okay, that's a great update. Thank you, Mr. Amato, and thanks for all of your work. Did anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Dyer?
Nope, not at this time, and thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Hickey?
I do. Gil, the only real question that I have is, being the Health Agent with Arlene there, you know, as the chair of the Board of Health, how does it change for the restaurants where they're no longer serving, you know, dining, it's all takeout now? How does that change with the Board of Health and being the Health Agent?
They still have to comply with the food code. I mean, that doesn't change at all. The only thing is that they're just social distancing, and most places have the people come to the door, say their name, and they bring it out to them. And they've all been very good. Everybody's been excellent, as far as that goes. You know, they still have to apply, you know, the food code still applies, you know, sanitary and all that, and, you know, restaurant inspections. That's still complied. That hasn't changed.
Is that what you're asking, Jim, or are you asking, you know, like, so Gil, you're like, so yeah, you're still, you're still enforcing the food, you know, sanitary, you know, code and all that. But you're also, my understanding is, I think you're stopping by periodically to just kind of make sure that they're adhering to like social distancing and, you know, and like have good practices in what they're doing.
Yes, that takes place also, like, you know, like Chief Mix says, you know, we're all, I think we're all, we're all out there doing it, because, you know, we're here to protect the townspeople, the townspeople in Hanson, and also ourselves. So the thing is, you know, adhere to the regulations that are coming out. I believe tomorrow morning or tonight, there's going to be another regulation on the grocery stores. And I think Shaws has already probably done that, you know, making the lanes one way and, you know, enforcing social distancing themselves. So, you know, I feel that Hanson is very well protected, and we'll make it through this. It'll be tough, but we'll make it through it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Amato. Jim, did that answer your question?
Yep, I just wanted to, you know, make sure there weren't really any differences.
Okay, great. Mr. Bloss?
I'm good, thanks, Gil.
Okay. And Ms. Diaz?
Yeah. We, after our meeting yesterday, I went and checked our emergency supplies we have in the building, just for times like this. And I did find hand sanitizer that I, that I left some at Town Hall, sent some over to the fire department, and left some for the police, just as sort of a backup for them, because it was what we could share with them, and then we'll get reimbursed at some time. We'll continue to look for resources through the Coalition, who's in a meeting next week, to see what's available, if we can help out in any way, getting them any more resources, any more masks or anything else that we might be able to get.
Okay, that's great. And thanks for all of your hard work. I know it's been a bit of a fire drill for everybody. So, and pardon me stealing that, Jerry, because normally that applies to you. But, okay, and I, Mr. Stanbrook, anything else you wanted to kind of say to put a bow on, on the, you know, update from the emergency preparedness group?
Sure, this might be a little bit further down in the agenda, but it probably fits in here, so maybe I could get this in. Just an update on the town operations and what we've been up to, you know, town-wide. Essential employees are still coming into work. Nonessential employees are working from home to the extent that they can. Obviously, the meetings like tonight are being held telephonically. Board of Health meeting was earlier today, and our IT person, Ryan McGonigal, has been, you know, top-notch in getting these meetings going. You know, kudos to him. And just, public hearings that can be postponed have, are being postponed. There was a new act that passed last Friday, and I know Ms. Fedorov is on the call here, and I'd like to say thank you for, you know, getting that word out to us about how we can, zoning board of appeals, you know, mandatory hearings were able to be waived with the new act that was passed last Friday. So those are going to be postponed. Just, again, what we said about the emergency, what I said about the emergency management team, we've been meeting formally every week or so. We've been meeting informally by phone or in person almost every single day, several times a day with most of, at least I have with others on the team. So we are keeping informed. The whole team is on the same page, I feel. I've been getting a daily situational awareness report from Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, or MEMA. And I, you know, also I have a department head report about what each department has been doing, if you want me to read that. But in general, we're, you know, we're going with a skeleton crew and where the essential people are in. Again, when I say essential, it's not that other workers aren't essential. Of course, everyone that works for the town, and what they do is essential. It's just in the sense of the governor's order, who is essential and who isn't. That's where I'm going with the word essential. So I just like to praise everybody. They've done a fantastic job, especially Greer. Assistant has been doing a great job as well. So just, you know, let's keep it going. Hopefully, it doesn't go much longer. And, you know, thank you to the remote employees as well, the people that are working from home. It's maybe difficult in some people's situation to stay home with their family, I don't know, but they're doing a great job, and they are contributing, and we're doing what we should be doing to help the public during this situation. So, thank you.
Well, and I thank you, John. I think, I think that's an important update, because I think people may be under the mistaken impression that just because people aren't coming to Town Hall, that work, town work is not getting done by people. And so I know you guys are diligently behind the scenes, getting things done, making sure that town operations continue with as little interruption as possible, given the scope of what we're dealing with. And so I thank you, and I thank Greer, and I thank everybody, you know, Highway and all the guys. I've seen everybody, and I know they're all working hard. You know, the assessor, the, you know, treasurer, collector, I mean, the list just goes on and on and on. I don't want to leave anybody out, but I do appreciate all of the hard work that you guys are doing. With that, I'm going to just kind of, once again, go around to everybody, see if anybody had any questions for you. Mr. Dyer?
Not at this time.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Hickey?
No, I'm all set. Thanks, John.
And Mr. Bloss?
Mr. Stanbrook, just a clarification from me. When you said hearings are waived for the planning board, I'm assuming you meant like dates and deadlines?
Yeah, Mr. Stanbrook?
Yes, I meant to say was, they haven't been waived. They've been postponed to a later date. They haven't, yeah, thank you for that clarification. They've been postponed to a later, they have not been waived.
Right. It postponed without any adverse effect to us, because a lot of times, if you postpone, and you don't meet the deadlines, then the proponent ends up getting something by virtue of you not meeting, but the governor's order allows that to be an exception. So, okay, well, that's great. I think that was a good update. With that, we'll move on to our next item, which is reporting the COVID-19 cases in Hanson. And I'll just kind of lay this up for you, that there's been a variety of positions on this. And I know, so, you know, right now, at present, the town of Hanson does not report out to the public the number of positive, the number of COVID-19 cases in Hanson that we're aware of. And that is a decision that is made by each local board of health, and we honor their, you know, sovereignty and the ability to make that decision. And so, you know, and they initially had produced some numbers a couple of weeks ago, I think, and then the Department of Public Health pushed back on all the local departments, on all the local board of health, and said, look, you know, we've had some early indications that people are getting bullied or singled out, or whatever, you know, and especially if you're in a small town, all it takes is a scanner, and people can kind of figure out who's who in the zoo. So I think the Board of Health had made the decision at that time to not publish the numbers. Now, I know you guys met this afternoon, and that was one of the agenda items you were going to formally take up, Ms. Diaz, and I didn't know if you had any updates on that, or really anything else you wanted to tell us about that you discussed at the meeting.
No, we're just following the DPH guidelines, which is county, numbers for county, and the numbers and information changes every day. The concern is that if you say to people, we have a very low number, people are not as diligent as they should be, and it really doesn't, having a low number of positives doesn't mean that there's not a lot of people in town with COVID. It means there are people that follow their category where they're not reported because they called their doctor, their doctor said stay home and self-quarantine, but doesn't tell you about the contacts and then become positive. There's just not enough information, and that's not going to be captured and shared on a daily basis. So if people continue, I say, act like everybody you come near has the virus, stay away from them, protect yourself. That is the only way we're going to slow it down and stop it from spreading. So, no, we're going to continue to follow DPH guidelines, which is only numbers per county. We're not providing that. There's a daily update by the DPH on numbers, so it would be difficult for us to keep changing that every day. So we'll just have people go to the DPH website to look at the numbers, but it'll only be by county. And I'm looking at something that was in Josh's letter today that shows the county, it tells you how many male, female, and it tells you age groups. It's broken down that way. But, and that's it. So we won't be sharing that information.
All right. So Hanson is going to continue to not publish those numbers, and the Board of Health's position is really, look, this is a fluid situation. These numbers really, it's not like you can take them to the bank. You know, there's so many different things that factor in. I mean, people could be asymptomatic and not know that they have it. They might not get attached, and, you know, they may stay home and self-isolate. So there's so many different things that factor in, that the numbers really, other than, you know, for those people who just like to have a number, you know, to be able to kind of wrap their mind around, really isn't anything that you can hang your hat on. And so we're going to, we're going to stay the course. And it isn't to suggest that you guys are not on top of this, that you're not doing what you need to do, that our numbers are not getting to the state and being rolled up at the county level. It's just that you guys feel as though it actually would, in some sense, give people a false sense that, you know, don't worry, Hanson doesn't have that many people, you know, that have contracted COVID-19. So, okay, well, we respect that. Was there anything else that came out of that meeting, Ms. Diaz?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, I'm just going to pop around to make sure that the rest of the board is copacetic with this. Mr. Dyer?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Great. Mr. Hickey?
I'm all set.
And Mr. Bloss?
Thanks, Arlene.
You're welcome. All right. Yeah, thanks, Gil, and thanks, Arlene. We appreciate that update. Coronavirus role and responsibility, well, has Josh Cutler joined us? Okay, he said he would be a little bit late, so perhaps he hasn't joined us yet.
Hello.
Oh, okay, great, Josh. Hi, Josh.
Hi there.
I was, I'm going to take, take things a little bit out of order, and I thought I might prevail upon you to give us a coronavirus legislative update in 10 minutes or less. And I'm just laughing, because it's been ridiculous, the amount of updates and legislative changes and, you know, exceptions and all of that. But, you know, first, I want to thank you for all of your excellent and extremely timely updates and your partnership with the town, with the employees at Town Hall. You've really been hitting it out of the ballpark and keeping us updated. So I'll just turn it over to you, and you can share whatever you think might be most pertinent at this time.
Sure, great. Well, thank you, and back at you, guys. Thanks for all that you're doing. I know it's a tough, unprecedented
all that you're doing. I know it's a tough, unprecedented time and everyone's doing, uh, doing a great job. Um, so, um, I'll just try to give a quick rundown and folks have questions about anything in particular, happy to take questions or even talk further offline. Um, from, uh, from a macro point of view, it's important to know that, you know, state government is continuing to operate. We're not going in and having our formal sessions the way we normally used to, but we are still, uh, having, you know, committee hearings virtually and, uh, meeting with our colleagues. We are voting, uh, through informal sessions. We have passed several bills already. I think some of them are already referenced, a couple giving more flexibility to cities and towns, um, for things like, you know, moving your election, moving your town meeting date, um, allowing you to do one-twelfth budgets if necessary, um, preventing what's, I think Wes was talking about this or someone was, constructive approvals. So that if, you know, the ZBA is unable to meet, there's, there's not a constructive approval. And that extends for a period of 45 days after the state of emergency ends, by the way. Um, so that sort of stuff is happening and I would suggest to everyone, if there's something that you're confronting that we haven't dealt with yet, let me know. Um, because the chances are, other towns are as well. And, um, you know, we can, we can, you know, bring that up the food chain and hopefully get it addressed. Um, so please, uh, if you have things that, um, of that nature, let me know. Um, so those are sort of, um, from a legislative, legislative point of view, the major things that are going on. I know, um, because I know it was relevant for Chief Mix is that we did, uh, in the bill that was passed, it was signed into law on Friday, that we did extend the ability for restaurants to, to sell beer and wine through takeout, um, or with certain limitations. So that is now in effect. That was signed by the governor on Friday. Um, that bill also included, and, and some of the prior bills included, um, going back to the issue of town elections, the ability to do voting by mail, uh, and making it easier to do absentee ballots. Uh, those are a couple of key provisions. Um, so, uh, that's what's happening from a legislative point of view. Obviously, the governor, through his executive orders, is also taking a, a number of actions. I know it was mentioned earlier today, just, um, today, he is limiting grocery stores to 40% of, uh, capacity and that includes employees. So for Shaw's, um, whatever their capacity is, is deemed by, um, the chief, um, they would be limited to 40% of that and that, which would include their employees. So that was effective, uh, today. Um, the governor also made some announcements about testing, uh, some good news on that front. Um, we opened up, uh, you may have seen the news yesterday, we opened up a first responder testing facility at Foxborough Stadium, uh, Patriot Stadium in Foxborough. And then today, we announced a new testing site, uh, by CVS. It's actually in Lowell, so it's a little bit of a hike. Uh, and that has a new testing capacity. It's called Abbott Labs. I'm not sure on the details of it, but they can do in, basically instant testing, so testing on site where you can get the results very quickly. Uh, and they expect to conduct about a thousand tests a day at that site, the CVS. Um, it's by appointment only. So you go to CVS.com and you can plug in your information and, and, and get an appointment. Um, I would expect and hope that, that we'll see more of those types of sites, uh, coming online, but that was the first one and it was just announced today. Um, so, um, those are a couple of the big things I wanted to just mention for everybody's benefit. I know, uh, you probably run into a lot of folks, you know, whether it's, and Laura has done a great job through the Hanson Business Network, um, who are unemployed, uh, small businesses facing challenges, people who are gig economy workers, um, you, you name it across the gamut. There are a lot of benefits in the federal CARES Act, which I know was mentioned earlier, uh, including the, what's called the Paycheck Protection Program will help a lot of businesses. And also, we expect possibly as soon as tomorrow, if not by Friday, that, uh, folks who are self-employed or, um, gig economy workers will be eligible for state unemployment benefits via the CARES Act. This is something a lot of people have been asking me about. I'm sure folks probably asking you about as well. And the governor alluded to this today. We're waiting for the federal government, the US Department of Labor to kind of give us everything we needed to make that live. We're expecting that to happen this week. So, uh, you know, the next three days. And then folks who are, um, self-employed or, you know, 1099 workers, as we say, will be eligible to collect unemployment benefits, which is typically not, um, not something they're able to do. So, um, I'll stop here. There's a lot of things I, I would, like, I guess the last thing I'd mention is just on the PPE side. I know, uh, chief, the chiefs have the information and have MEMA contacts. Um, we, you know, we're here in region five, our HMC. If anybody has need for PPE, um, you know, I am seeing these requests get filled. So if you're, if you're contacting our regional HMC person, uh, and putting in your requests, they are getting filled. And, you know, it takes a few days, there's some lag time, um, but that is happening. If anybody is running into trouble with that, please let me know. Um, but, um, I guess I'll stop here. Hopefully, I'm just going to give it my cellphone. If anybody doesn't have it and needs to reach me, uh, it's 781-422-4001. Uh, so feel free to reach out. Uh, I know I've heard from many of you already. If there's anything we can be doing, uh, including Senator Brady and myself, please, uh, let me know. So I'll stop here and take any questions that you guys have.
Okay, great. Um, hey, Josh, I saw that you, you are doing a, um, that you're doing a, a business, uh, I think, uh, something similar to what you did for the Hanson Business Network, uh, last week for the Duxbury folks?
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering if you, pardon?
I was going to say, Laura, Laura came up with such a great idea that we're totally copying it and doing in Duxbury.
Well, um, it was great. I mean, it was well attended and I think it's something that people, you know, are feeling very nervous about, um, you know, if you're a small business owner, how do you, how do you get through this? Um, with, you know, what loans are available, what can you do for unemployment and stuff? Um, when you, um, get the, like, credentials for that, can you share them with, like, John so that, um, you know, we can, um, you know, leverage that and send it out to some of the small businesses in Hanson? I assume it's not only open to Duxbury businesses, right?
Oh, absolutely. I know. It's, it opened to everybody. Correct. Right. It'll be a little different format. We're doing it on, through PAC TV, uh, but you can stream it online live. So it, anybody could, anybody could, uh, can watch, just pay. Yeah.
Okay, great. All right. Thanks. And I'll.
Just to be clear.
Um, okay. Um, and I'll go around. Mr. Dyer, any questions?
Josh, it might be a little too early to answer this question, but do we have any idea of what's going to happen with the budget, uh, for fiscal year?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for, that's a great question. So actually, um, today, in fact, was supposed to be a, uh, what we call a revised consensus revenue hearing. We do what's called a consensus revenue hearing every year. Basically, we get the, you know, the, the top economists and, and folks who come in and say, okay, we expect next year that our revenues are going to increase by, you know, X percent. Usually it's between two and 5%. And that's how we build our budget around that number because we, you know, figure out how much we're going to have to spend and then we back into that. Um, obviously, the number that we came up with back in January is no longer going to be that accurate because, you know, we're going to have a huge, uh, change in state revenues starting now. Um, so we, we're supposed to have a hearing today to hear from folks and try to get a sense, an early sense, because it's still very early, of what this is going to impact our budget fiscally. Um, and unfortunately, they had some technical issues and couldn't get the hearing to be streamed. So, uh, they had to reschedule, which isn't a bad thing, I think, because it's, it's so early on. It's really so hard to get a, a handle on the magnitude of what this is going to mean from a fiscal point of view. And obviously, we have the federal government that is providing some resources to the states as well, and we, we, we hope there's more to come. Um, because we're, you know, we're paying, you know, we're, we're like, like the town of Hanson is, but on a bigger level, we're obviously assuming a lot more expenses than we were prepped for and we're getting a lot less revenue than we had expected. So, that's a long answer, Matt. Uh, I think usually in their first week in April is when the House Ways and Means budget comes out and we can start to, to tell you all, like, you know, where, where things look and try to make improvements here and there. Uh, that obviously didn't happen this week. We're not going to have a normal budget cycle. It's not going to be anything remotely close to a normal budget cycle. Uh, there's talk that we'll have to push our formal sessions past July 31st, which is when we traditionally end for the session. Um, that isn't decided yet, but, um, it's going to be a challenging budget year for sure. Um, you know, um, but at, at this point, it's hard to say how challenging. I think once this budget forecast is rescheduled, I suspect, um, within the next week, you know, at least we'll have some numbers to, to, to give you and to share with you. But, um, I'm still skeptical that they're going to have that close a handle on this, you know, when we're still midway through this sort of crisis. So, that's where we're at.
Great. Thank you.
So, um, so Josh, just to build on that, was that the call that was supposed to be at, or the, like, the streaming thing that was supposed to be at 10 today and then there was just like a cluster, the whole thing?
That's correct.
Um, as part of that, were you going to be discussing schools? Because there's been a lot of, um, hubbub out there. I'll say there's been a lot of rumor mills about, um, you know, how all this state funding is going to impact school budgets because this, you know, obviously all of the towns are postponing their town meetings and town elections. And then that pushes them into the, you know, very, very precariously close into that July 1st timeframe. And was that anything that was going to be discussed today?
So, so, yeah, two things. One is, first off, on the, uh, on the second part of that, just to be clear, that we did, we did give the towns and, and, and the regional schools included, the ability to do one-twelfth budgets. So you don't have to necessarily bake in your whole FY '21 budget by July 1st, because we don't expect.
Yep.
We're going to be able to do that. Uh, but no, so to, to the macro question, so that today's hearing was really more about coming up with a revised consensus revenue hearing. So like, what do we expect today, knowing what we know today, our revenues are going to increase by, or, you know, frankly, I shouldn't say increase, what our revenues are going to be for the next fiscal year and having a revised number, because that's what we use to, to build our budget. Um, you know, we have a variety of different revenue sources at the state level. It's a little different, obviously, at the town level where you're mostly relying on property taxes and, and then state aid. Obviously, we have, you know, sales tax, capital gains, um, income tax, a variety of, of different sources. And some of them will, you know, maybe impacted more than others. Um, I think for this, we also, on the other hand, we have this issue with the current fiscal year, um, because we're still, you know, we haven't finished this fiscal year and our revenues are going to be off for this fiscal year. Um, now, in the past, if you go back maybe five or six years, we had what were called nine C cuts. And I know some of you probably can remember those where we had to actually, uh, make cuts mid-year. I, I, I don't think that's going to happen. And it certainly, it, it's, we, we, it doesn't usually impact chapter 70 or, or UGA, because we, we always try to hold that harmless. So I think that's very unlikely that that would happen. Um, but it may be that we see some sort of shortfall before the end of this fiscal year and have to make some, some trims elsewhere, uh, to other areas of the budget. Um, so, another long-winded answer, but I, I don't know.
Okay. I mean, yeah, obviously the ball's in play, but, and, and I think it goes without saying, but whatever you can do to hold the course on, um, you know, on the chapter 70, we definitely don't want to see reductions. Um, so, uh, whatever you can do. Uh, Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah. Uh, one thing I would just add to that is just, uh, with everything, you know, because this is a disaster declared by FEMA, make it careful, and I'm sure you guys are already doing this, but carefully document all of your expenses, because we may be able to get reimbursement from the federal government, you know, as if, as if this, like a hurricane or a storm, and we would apply it to FEMA for reimbursement. This is the same thing. It's been declared a disaster. So please keep careful records, you know, school and DPW or, or Highway, um, whatever the, the case is, so that we can document that. So hopefully we can later on apply and get some of that money back for the town.
Oh, yeah. We're all over. In fact, that's one of the items I'm going to talk about later. Yep. Yep. Um, all right. Great. Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
Thanks, Josh.
Kenny?
Mr. Hickey?
Thanks for the time, Josh. Appreciate it.
Yeah, anytime.
Mr. Blas?
Thanks, Josh.
Hey, Wes.
All right. Thanks so much, Josh. Um, again, um, you know, it's great. You know, I, I, I'm grateful for, you know, Governor Baker. I'm grateful for you. I mean, these are the times when you really realized, you know, wow, we're lucky to have these people in office. That's just my two cents worth on that. Um, so thank you.
My pleasure. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and with that, we're going to move on to the, uh, timeline for town meeting and town election. So I'm going to, uh, queue that up to you, Mr. Stanbrook. And, um, if you are not speaking, if you can mute your phone, um, and I think that might, I might be talking to you, Ms. Diaz, I'm not sure, or Mr. Mitchell, I'm not sure.
Definitely wasn't me.
Okay.
Definitely not me either.
All right. Well, Ryan, I don't know if you can figure that out and just mute it. Um, okay. Um, so, Mr. Stanbrook, uh, we're going to go over the, um, oh, I'm sorry. Kate, uh, pardon me. I had skipped over you to, um, go to Josh. Um, but we'll circle back for coronavirus roles and responsibilities of town administrator and board of selectmen during state of emergency. I had asked Kate to join us just, you know, because these are, I hate to keep saying all these things that people keep saying, you know, unprecedented times, uncharted waters. Just, no, I can't come up with a new way to describe it. Um, so, um, you know, we're, we're in some strange times indeed. And, um, I just wanted Kate to kind of, you know, let us know, um, you know, what she's seeing in terms of the latitude that a board of selectmen may, um, or a town administrator may need to take during these times and what she's seeing out there and maybe just some, um, you know, pitfalls for the unwary and, uh, some encouragement or whatever else you want to share with us, Kate.
Sure. Um, encouragement, I'm not sure about, but I'll try for the rest. Um, in any event, so, yes, the, the place to begin really in this kind of situation, a pandemic, a, a situation involving disease, um, clearly is with the board of health. And they have a really, um, wide breadth of authority to handle, um, and enforce both the, uh, governor's executive orders, um, legislative measures, um, to take unilateral action themselves and create additional rules, um, to the extent that they don't conflict with, um, the, the governor's orders. Um, so, so, and it sounds to me, frankly, like a lot of those measures have been taken. I'm hoping that the technical, um, we were all just muted because I think someone, um, jumped in onto the call who probably shouldn't have been. So, can, is everyone, are the selectmen back on?
Yes, I am. I'll do, I'll do another roll call. Um, and Ryan, please guard this closely. Uh, Mr. Dyer?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell? Okay. Uh, Mr. Hickey?
I'm here.
And Mr. Blas?
I'm here.
Okay, great. I apologize for, uh, that, uh, distraction. Um, and, okay, Kate, go ahead.
Okay. So, um, the, it sounds to me like the Hanson Board of Health with the cooperation of, um, the police chief and the fire chief have been really taking an active role in ensuring these kind of health measures that the governor has put into place, um, are enforced. So that's all very positive. Um, the one thing that I've seen in terms of pitfalls is where, um, there's been a true conflict between a board of health's order and the governor's order, because there is some language in the governor's order in terms of, um, you know, number of people and, and, um, closing down non-essential businesses that you, the boards of health cannot make orders which directly conflict with that. So that's where there have been some issues, but mostly they have been small issues and have been resolved because your business owners really want to work cooperatively, um, in these, in these days. Um, it's not as adversarial as, as other situations may be because they want to keep their employees and their patrons safe as well. So, um, I've seen a lot of cooperation. Actually, it's been very positive, um, on both sides, both government and private business. So that's been very good. In terms of the board of selectmen, they should be working cooperatively with the board of health. And it sounds to me, based on the discussion, that, that that's been happening. Now, the interesting thing with Hanson is your Town Administrator Act gives the town administrator, uh, you know, a great deal of authority to help facilitate responses to emergency situations. Um, it's spelled out right in the act that, uh, John could work cooperatively with the chief, with the other department heads in the chair to, to respond to situations that aren't policy-driven per se, but they need immediate attention before a meeting could get posted. So the thing I'm thinking of in a normal context would be, you know, dealing with a water main break or something that requires immediate action. Um, John could jump on top of that, call the board, uh, the board chair. Um, they could walk through some options together without convening a meeting of the board. And then when the time permits, they could convene a meeting with the board of selectmen to talk about the responses. And those, those decisions could be ratified, or if it's a more policy-driven decision that needs to be made, that's when the board of selectmen would really have to act. And those decisions could be ratified, or if it's a more policy-driven decision that needs to be made, that's when the Board of Selectmen would really have to act. So, kind of knee-jerk, I guess the rule of thumb would be knee-jerk responses can sometimes be done through the town administrator's office. And those are situations really where you're reacting to an ongoing situation which can't wait for a meeting. Whereas policy-driven questions are, of course, left to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, that's great. I'll go, if you don't mind, Kate, I'll just go around and, again, Ryan, if we can really make sure, just the Selectmen. Mr. Dyer?
Nope, not at this time. Thanks, Kate.
Okay, great. And Mr. Mitchell?
Thanks, Kate.
Okay, great. And Mr. Hickey?
Kate, I have one question. So basically, in a nutshell, with the situation that's going on, and you know I hate to say this, but basically, the Selectmen are taking a backseat to the Board of Health and the town administrator on this.
I don't want to say taking a backseat, right, because that's a different, that's kind of, so the Board of Health has certain responsibilities, and they're an elected Board of Health, so they're, you know, independent of you all. But they have a defined set of responsibilities, namely to address and try to curb the spread of this disease, right? So they have rulemaking authority to do that. Now, there's one piece in 111, which is the Enabling Statute for the Board of Health, that provides that the Board of Selectmen can work in conjunction with the Board of Health, but you should really be working as a team because there are other policy-driven, so I'm thinking of things that have already happened in the past, right? So before it was apparent that maybe there was a health need to close town hall, it might have been important for the Board of Selectmen to be involved in the discussions for, well, okay, maybe we're not going to close town hall, but we're going to do. So some of the things I did in other towns were flex time, right? So you come in super early or stay super late. They have fewer people in the building, remote work, that kind of stuff. So those kind of operational questions, which are maybe separate and apart, although in some contexts still together with the need to address the health issue, but still separate and apart from what the Board of Health would be dealing with. They don't care, so the Board of Health doesn't care if your people are working remotely, but you as Selectmen do. So those are, so they're just different roles, I would say. But yes, your town administrator has a lot of responsibility in terms of reacting to immediate, to questions which need immediate answers. So he does have some authority there. Now, if it's going to be a policy-driven argument, so for example, you're the appointing authority for, maybe, maybe you aren't in Hanson, actually. Are you the appointing authority for like the fire chief?
Yep.
Yep. Yes, you are. Okay, so maybe, maybe a more policy-driven question would be, you know, I, as the appointing authority, the boss, thinks that this, I don't know, operational change should be discussed with us. Well, okay, yes, you're the Board of Selectmen. You have the right to listen to your fire chief or to ask him questions about operational changes that he's undertaken, if they're effective, has he thought of other things, those kinds of things. Now, likelihood, he's going to have better expertise than you and probably will just be filling you in, but that's the example I can think of off the top of my head. So I wouldn't say you're without a role. I'm saying that your role is different.
All set, Mr. Hickey?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that I didn't say we didn't have a role, although I like the way you put it, that we would work in conjunction with the Board of Health. But, you know, under the current situation, the Board of Health is receiving all the information that, you know, the governor and the state is putting out that the Selectmen wouldn't receive.
About the health, the public health issue.
So, for example, yeah, so for public health issues, so for example, even without this pandemic, and Arlene will jump in here too if she wants, but even absent this pandemic, if we were talking about some other contagious disease that the Board of Health has notified, they have certain regulations which they're obligated to abide by. So for example, under HIPAA, a Board of Health can, is afforded discretion to disclose certain information if the disclosure of certain information would help prevent the spread of the disease. And that's before any, you know, emergency measures. There was an emergency measure that you had to provide the address to first responders of patients who tested positively for COVID-19. That was an emergency order that was put in place. But even before that, say we were talking about, I don't know, and I wouldn't know the diseases, but Arlene probably would, mumps or something like that, or smallpox, right? The Board of Health has discretion to disclose to prevent the transfer of information and to investigate, okay, it's smallpox, and I have to interview these people to determine if they're exposed and what, you know, whether or not we should take action type thing. So that's even before the pandemic, Jim.
Thanks, Kate.
Jim? Hello? Arlene, go ahead. Okay, I just wanted to let Jim know some of the things that even before the pandemic, some of the reasons where we could, where HIPAA wouldn't apply, if there was a subpoena or court order, public health activities, serious threat to health and safety. We still wouldn't share personal information and identifying information.
Right.
But there are.
Right, that's actually a good point, Arlene, and I'm going to, I'm going to jump on you. Yeah, that's actually a good point. You never would want to disclose the identity of a person in any circumstance. That's a really good clarification, Arlene. And I think the reason why we rely on these Boards of Health is because they have the medical expertise, right? And they know, okay, we're reacting as a Board of Health to this information. We've got it under control, and there has to be a certain level of trust. Because, you know, to Arlene's point, and there are definitely two different schools of thought on this. People can manipulate the information and get access to information that they shouldn't be entitled to, even if the Board of Health had been careful not to disclose that information. So, that's exactly why there's definitely two different schools of thoughts on many Boards of Health, and I've seen them on both sides. But we rely on them for their medical expertise because we react without that expertise, and then the outcome maybe isn't as good. And I didn't mean to jump on you, Arlene. I'm awful on these meetings.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Okay, I think when we had, when we had had this conversation, you had indicated that the Board of Health sets the public health policy and that the Board of Selectmen sets pretty much all of the other policies that are supporting the Board of Health policy. So, you know, about employees and non-essential and essential and, you know, remote access and all that other stuff, that falls under us. And enforcement of the DPH stuff falls under the Board of Health.
Yeah, that's right. That's exactly right.
Okay, Mr. Boss?
And as always, Kate, we're acting as a board, not as individuals, yes?
Yeah, so as a general matter, no individual on any board has any authority than Joe Blow on the street. You know, you're nothing without your board. Like I said, there's some, some authority in the Town Administrator Act, which allows John to work together with the Chair and with the department heads to respond to emergency situations really that can't wait. So, you know, I need to sign this document today, otherwise I don't know what will happen, you know, and that's not a good example. But the water main break is a good example, right? I need to shut down the water from the corner of X to Y, and let's put out a public notice, okay? And then you convene a meeting of the Board of Selectmen to figure out how are we going to fix this thing. So, yes, as a general matter, the members of the Board of Health should not be acting unilaterally, with the exception of a real emergency situation where then the Chair can act in cooperation with the town administrator.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Okay, Mr. Stanbrook, did you have any questions for Kate while we're on the line?
No, I don't. I just want to say thank you. She's been an unbelievable resource for me during this whole thing. So, thank you, Kate.
Oh, thank you. And thank you, thank you all for having me. It's been, you know, it's certainly Fast and Furious is not even, there aren't words to describe it, but it's fast and furious, but we're trying to address everyone's concerns, and I'm hoping that I was helpful to you all tonight.
Very helpful. Thank you so much, Kate.
Okay, and did you want me to stay on for anything else? I don't have the agenda in front of me or?
I mean, if you wanted to stay on, because we're going to talk about the town meeting and town elections, you might want to chime in after John gives his update because you did have a critical role to play in that. Okay, great.
Yeah, I don't mind naming him on at all.
Yeah. With that, John, I know you've had an opportunity to circle back with Beth. And where we last left off was, we had voted at our, I believe it was the March 24th meeting, to postpone town meeting till June 15th, and we were permitted under the current statute to do that. But what, where there was a disconnect is it turns out that there had not been a change made at the state level for town elections. And we had voted not to change the town election date, which would have resulted in a whole host of issues, not the least of which is you have to set the town election date at town meeting, and it's typically two weeks after town meeting. So, circling back, we wanted to take a look at making sure that we were syncing all that up, and Beth chimed in and gave us her input. And I believe we subsequently took a vote to postpone town elections to the 27th. And that all seemed quite wonderful and as though we were going to, you know, be able to do that. And then we were told, and Kate, I'll kind of turn it over to you to tell you, to tell the next kind of iteration of what happened last week.
Yeah, so there, there's an ability now in the legislation, the emergency legislation, to postpone the town elections, right? And before that legislation was put in place, you always had to go to court and get approval. Now, when there was disagreement among all the attorneys, and I'm on all these lists with the attorneys across Massachusetts for municipal lawyers, there was disagreement whether or not the other deadlines would change as a result of changing the election. And we took a look at the statute governing elections, and what, all these deadlines are set based on the date of the election, right? So if you have an election on June 20th, you back out the dates from when you can pull papers and return papers and all of those deadlines. So we felt like we were in pretty good shape, but then the Election Division came out with guidance saying that the only date, if you had already called for your election, so the only date that would change would be the election date. So nothing like your nomination papers or anything like that would change, which proves to be very problematic for candidates, right? Because if people are sheltering in place or at home, they're not running to the food store, and if they're running to the food store, they're not talking to you, which is the right thing to be doing. But that's when you get your nomination papers signed. So, the long and the short of it was that we ended up having to go to court anyway, and we filed an action for injunctive relief and requested that the court extend the deadlines for all of those submission requirements under the law. And we were successful in doing that. We submitted papers. We contacted the Election Division, who indicated they weren't going to object. They were happy to allow us individually to do that. They just didn't want to do that statewide and presumed that all towns wanted those dates extended. And the judge issued our injunction, so we have all of those dates effectively moved.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that update. Mr. Stanbrook, did you want to add anything else in there? I think you've all got in your pack at the new timeline that Beth outlined for us with the dates that nomination papers can be pulled and that they're due and, you know, what positions are open for reelection and all that good stuff. But was there anything else you wanted to add to the discussion, Mr. Stanbrook?
I could read that from Town Clerk Beth Sloan, or we can just go by the quick timeline of the new dates. I guess we'd go by the quick, I want to go by the timeline, I guess. So Wednesday, May 6th will be the last day to pick up nomination papers now. Friday, May 8th is the last day to return nomination papers. Tuesday, May 26th at 8:00 PM is the annual town meeting voter registration deadline. Monday, June 1st is our deadline to publish the special town meeting warrant. Friday, June 5th at 8:00 PM is the annual town election and the special town meeting voter registration deadline. Monday, June 8th is our deadline to publish the annual town meeting warrant. Monday, June 15th is town meeting. Saturday, June 27th is town election.
Okay, that's great. Any questions? Mr. Dyer?
Nope, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
None.
Mr. Hickey? Mr. Boss?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, great, John. Then I think. Mr. Hickey? Okay, you're all set? And Kate, I mean, you can certainly stay on if you'd like, but I don't think there's anything else that we're going to discuss that would really, I'm trying to, yeah. I mean, I don't, you know, I think we're pretty clear about the rest of the agenda, but it's really your prerogative one way or the other.
No, no, then I'll jump off and, and thanks again.
Thank you. All right, take care and stay safe. Okay, Mr. Stanbrook, actually, if you don't mind, I think, have we got Jean Sullivan on, John?
No, I'm going to be, I'm going to be speaking for her too.
All right, so it doesn't matter if I move things around or not. Okay, so I think probably it does make sense to talk about the forecasted impact on the town financials, and then we'll get into the possible vote to delay town tax due dates.
Okay, thank you. So I met with our town accountant, Todd Hassett, today, just and asked him those questions about how this coronavirus-type of stuff will be happening, will be impacting on FY20's town financials. And he told me that, you know, cash flow is okay through the end of the, depending on whether we have a, you know, if we decide to even move the date from May to June, it's still okay for cash flow. The FEMA disaster declaration, sorry, FEMA has declared the, this COVID-19 as a federal disaster. So all the departments are tracking the costs, and we will be forwarding them to the fire chief to input into FEMA. And again, that usually ends up being a 75% reimbursement to the town, but it usually takes a while. It's not, not quick at all. Several, several times we've been. Several, several times we've been, it takes, you know, we send something in for 2013 and we get it in 2018 or 2019. They, it's not a quick fix of money. But we do keep track of it and we are keeping track of it. In fiscal year '20, we're going to have some budget transfers at the special town meeting. They're going to be needed, but they're not necessarily related to this pandemic. It's just things like solid waste and the transfer station enterprise and the recreation enterprise, they're going to be needing transfers. But they probably would have needed transfers anyway. Again, especially at the transfer station with the increased costs related to picking up recyclables, the increase in the price per ton. Camp Kewaunee and the recreation and also ambulance receipts for the moment have really just dried up as far as revenues. So that's something that we're going to need to watch, but we may be okay. It's not a dire thing, but at least it's worth, it's on the radar to keep a watch on it, I guess. For fiscal year '21, as Representative Cutler was saying earlier, state aid is uncertain. The FY '21 Governor's Budget, which seems like it was a lifetime ago, but it was only, what, three months ago, two and a half months ago? The projection for, it was $1.58 million roughly for the town and state aid. So, I mean, if we were to get that, it would be, I think it would be a win. But again, so you could take that number and start thinking to yourself, is it going to, if there was a 10% cut, that's $158,000. If it's a 5% cut, it's half of that, 75, 77,000. That's a number to at least think about. I don't know what the cut will be. I don't think anyone knows. Or they'll even, whether there'll be a cut, who knows? Let's hope there isn't. But that's, that's where we are with that. That's going to be money that we're, we're, we have in there now that'll probably have to come out, whatever those cuts might be in fiscal year '21. And again, with fiscal year '21, on new growth, without getting into the nuts and bolts of it, new growth is new taxable property that can be, that hasn't been taxed in the, before. Usually it's things like new buildings, someone puts on a new deck, things like that. Obviously, with construction being delayed, that new growth is probably, might still be coming. But we have a deadline of June 30th to actually capture new growth. It has to happen by June 30th, or we can't keep it, we can't use it for, as a number for fiscal year '21. The Department of Revenue won't allow it. So that new growth may be pushed back into fiscal year '22. Or maybe the people cut back because they've, you know, things get really tough and things are tough. And they don't do that extra deck. They don't build that extra, fill in the blank, whatever the new building would be, to a new property value increase. And that might be a long-term thing there. And another long-term, my, and again, this is a long-term, but it may, it may happen in fiscal year '21, may happen in fiscal year '22, I don't know. But you have to start thinking about things like motor vehicle excise. I don't think that there's going to be a lot of people rushing out to buy new cars in the near future. That's where we get a lot of our money. Again, motor vehicle excise, so the town's budget for fiscal year '21 is 1.5 million dollars. So again, if that goes down 10%, that's $150,000. If it goes down five, it's half of that, $750,000. So, I'm sorry, $75,000. So again, unknown whether what will happen. It's, but at least those are the things that I talked to Town Accountant about. And at least those should be out there for discussion or at least thought-provoking, thought-provoking ideas, anyway. So that was all I had.
Okay, thanks, John. And I think so, we don't really have any solid idea. Obviously, we're kind of early, even though we're in the throes of it right now, you know, the actual pandemic. We don't know ultimately what the economic fallout is going to be for us, both from state revenue perspective, from our own revenue perspective, from our expenses. We've got so many different balls up in the air that it's, you know, it's difficult to predict. But that's good to know that Todd thinks at least, I think you cut out a little bit, but I think you had said at least through till the end of the quarter, we're in a good, solid position and, you know, in terms of, because we've gone to that quarterly billing process.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's good to know. So I'm just going to just kind of do a quick round robin and then we'll get, we'll, we'll move on to the possible delay for tax due dates. Mr. Dyer?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Oh, all set.
Mr. Hickey?
Off set, thanks, John.
Mr. Blas?
All set, thanks, John.
Okay, John, so I know you've circled back and talked to the, talked to the Treasurer Collector, Jean Sullivan and Todd about the mechanics and the possibility of possibly voting to delay tax due dates. Did you want to cue this up and give a little bit of history about how typically towns can't just unilaterally decide to do this, but that we've had, you know, some, I believe it was the Governor's Order or some other piece of, some other update as a result of COVID-19 that allows us to make this one-time change?
So yes, thank you. So the state says when we can send out bills, by state law, and usually the fourth quarter bill for real estate taxes and personal property are due on May 1st. Because of what's going on now, the legislature passed a, an act, just, I just got the Department of Revenue's guidance on it today. So I think they may have passed it Friday, that allowed them to move to June 1st and to waive any interest and penalties of that fourth quarter bill. So it's a very complex guidance that the Department of Revenue sent down. I just, we just got it today. I talked to our Treasurer Collector, Jean Sullivan. There are still questions regarding the implementation of this new law. And she was saying that she would recommend that if there was any way we could kind of put this off a week and let some of the details shake out. I mean, in general, the thinking is postponing it from May to June, the fourth quarter deadline. There are several things that we would have to do in order to do that. There are questions about whether, when you start counting interest and penalties from what particular date that isn't in the, I think, I think the DLS report is at least 10 pages here, so, of their guidance. So we just got it today. And I was, I was hoping that maybe it would be the sense of the board that we could wait a week until next week, where we could kind of shake out these details, get the questions answered. It's very fresh and it's, you know, it's, but maybe, or maybe just to talk about the idea of putting it off to June 1st. And maybe a vote would be for next week when we find all the details of, I know exactly when, what day we can do and what. And, and one more thing real quickly is if you owe fiscal year 2016 motor vehicle excise tax and you've owed for the last three years, that's not putting off the, that particular bill. So penalties and interest are still due as they always would be. This is just fourth quarter bills that were, that were issued after March 10th alone. So, thank you.
Okay, and again, I know it's fresh and Jean's had a few other things going on. But do you know if she's had an opportunity to explore if we waive the interest and penalties? You know, what that means financially? Are we talking, you know, about our extremely large amount, or?
I don't have the amount because of that. Because if you think about it, a lot of people have their mortgage payment directly, you know, deducted by either their mortgage company or directly coming out, right out of their check account on a specific day, if they have their escrow account going. So we, we may get a lot of payments just by automatic payment. So it's difficult to know who has, you know, who's going to be paying, coming in and paying, who's going to be late, who would pay automatically? I mean, some, what we heard today is some banks are realizing that we may be pushing the date off and they may hold back on that automatic payment. But I, again, talking with both Todd and Jean, the moving the date from May 1 to June 1 won't significantly, you know, impact the cash flow to the town so that it causes, you know, any undue hardship.
Okay, but what I'm hearing from you is Jean feels like she just doesn't have, she doesn't even really know, know what like the next steps are and the timing. And she's got a, she just needs a minute to wrap her mind around implementing this and that she's hoping that we'll put it off to vote until next week?
Yes, that's correct. It's, it's complex, it was wide-ranging. And again, we have the Department of Revenue guidance. We just got it today and it's, it's not, it's, it's very inclusive, but it's not complete. And there are several questions about, around dates and interest rates that haven't been, haven't been fully vetted yet. And I wouldn't want to vote on something and without, you know, knowing it, soup to nuts and making sure it's the right thing to do. So that would be my opinion.
I mean, that, that makes sense to me, but it makes me nervous because, you know, we're already, we're already at the beginning of April. But obviously, you know, Jean knows what she's doing and that's what she gets paid for. So, I mean, if she doesn't feel like she's ready to implement it, I'll just go around and, and just kind of get a, not a vote, but like just a general consensus. Mr. Dyer, thoughts?
My thoughts on this would be have it be voluntary. You know, if there is a hardship in a household, what I would recommend is putting an application on the town website that they can fill out electronically. And if they don't have, if they don't have the internet or whatever, they can call Town Hall, we'll send out a form that they can send back. But, you know, if people can make those payments, I'd say definitely do so. Don't put off bills and go from there.
Okay, Mr. Dyer, just to be clear, and we'll take that all into consideration if we do, you know, take it up for a vote next week in terms of implementing. I would expect that the town Treasurer Collector would make a proposal to us about, and I think it would probably be along those lines. But for the purposes of this discussion, I just wanted to gauge whether you felt comfortable waiting until next week to take an official vote on what we were going to do.
Yep, if the department head thinks that we need more time, then give it, give it more time.
Great. Mr. Mitchell?
I'm okay with waiting to vote until next week, but I'm not in favor of extending it for a month. Like John said, I think a lot of people that have mortgages, their taxes are included in their escrow. You probably have a lot of people that are retired, that their houses are paid off, that, you know, their retirement's not being affected financially by this virus. And I just think at the risk of having mortgage companies hold back money and all that, I just, I, I think I've just, I wouldn't be in favor of it. But I'm fine with waiting until next-
I don't think, I don't think what's on the table is like, is postponing it for everybody. To the extent people can pay, we're asking them to pay. But we're saying that you could postpone under hardship, similar to what Mr. Dyer. I, I don't think anybody, at least I, I have not understood that the proposal on the table is for us to waive it for everybody until June 1st. You know, for instance, like mine is already taken out of, yeah, yeah. So you're good, you're good with waiting to take up the vote? And again, this, this is some of the detail we need Jean to come back to us with, you know, like a more solid proposal and how she's going to implement it and how she would have people work with her, you know, if they had hardships and that type of thing.
Right, but again, I think that once you extend it for a month, someone that may have the money that would normally pay it on time is going to say, oh, you know what, they've given us a month and they're going to just kick back and wait a month. So I don't think it's the best-
Yeah, I don't think we're talking about, but we're not talking about universally extending it. We're talking about, as Mr. Dyer had spoken about earlier, on a case, like if people want to, want to, I guess, work with us? Or, I don't know, I guess we'll talk to Jean about it. But I, it wasn't my impression. We were saying, oh, everybody wait a month. Because it's not really, some people are not in a position where they need to wait a month. And, and the town would like the money sooner rather than later. Because as you all know, we've got bills to pay. Okay, so, but you're okay with talking about this and taking it up for a vote next week?
Why wouldn't we just leave it alone? And then, like Mr. Dyer said, take it on a case-by-case basis? You know, if someone's, you know, financially strapped and they can't pay their taxes? Just my opinion.
So you don't, okay. Mr. Hickey?
Yes, I think without having all the information, we could have tabled this before the meeting started. And then, once we had all the answers to any possible questions that we could have asked, you know, take a possible vote or at least a discussion on the situation in the next week or two. But I, I think we've discussed this long enough.
Okay, I don't think that the Chair, at least, did not know that we did not have all of the information. But I hear what you're saying. Mr. Blas?
Next week.
Okay, great. So John, obviously Jean's going to have to get more information and we'll have to have a more solid proposal to respond to.
Okay, understood.
Okay, great. And next is federal disaster declaration of COVID-19 response and tracking response. You kind, you kind of alluded to this, but if you want to quickly go over it?
Yeah, again, just like I said earlier, the, the federal and the state, FEMA and MEMA have declared this COVID-19 as a federal disaster. We are tracking the related expenses and we're going to be funneling them through, to the Fire Chief, because he's the emergency management person that usually runs these FEMA reimbursements. Again, don't, don't think it's going to come in the next three months, although I, you know, I could be wrong, but I doubt it. It usually takes a long time to get most FEMA reimbursements. But we are tracking it and we're on top of it.
Okay, great. Knowing that it's not going to come quickly. You've already given us the update on town operations, that was great. And so we'll move along to vote to extend closure of nonessential office and buildings to comply with Governor Baker's order?
Yeah, so the Governor extended his order from, I think it was, it was either yesterday or today, we were supposed to come back. I'm looking at Greer.
I think it was the 6th.
It was the 6th, so it was yesterday. And he's extended it to May 4th. So I wanted to run that by, and, you know, I'm assuming that we were going to continue the essential, nonessential split that we've been doing, you know, through up April 6th and continue that through May 4th. One thing that has come up, you know, with the extension of the order is whether people that work at Camp Kewaunee are essential or nonessential workers. Initially, I had classified them as a nonessential worker because I had read the Governor's, the Governor's list of who was essential and who wasn't. And I did not see people that I thought were, that, you know, the job descriptions at Camp Kewaunee as being on the Governor's list. But it may be that they are essential. And I, and I just wanted to kind of throw that out there for a discussion. I, I, I don't know whether they're essential or nonessential. And right now, I'm looking for the actual order from the Governor because I have the wording of what, what it was. So I just want to throw it out as a discussion point while I search for the exact wording of what the Governor said was an essential worker and what wasn't.
Okay. So I guess I-
Sorry, just to interrupt, Chairman, I did find the wording. So here's the wording that I read was, that is in the order. It said, "Workers who support the operation, maintenance, and public safety of parks, forests, reservations, conservation restrictions, wildlife management areas, water supply protection lands, and other critical natural resources, and open space for passive recreation." So when I read that initially, when the Governor put it out, I didn't think that Camp Kewaunee fell into that position, into that as an essential worker. But I, it is up for discussion, but perhaps it's, they do, I don't know.
Okay. So I, I think maybe under the open, you know, the fact that they're, the caretakers, at least, are, you know, that's passive recreation up there, people walking, boating and all that. I'm just going to do a little round robin thought process on should we extend to comply with Governor Baker's order to May 4th, which I'm not sure we have much of a choice on that, but we'll have to take a vote. And then also, where do you, you know, what are your thoughts on whether the caretakers up at Camp Kewaunee and the Camp Kewaunee, and obviously the people that are overseeing them, would be considered essential employees or not? Mr. Dyer?
No, I do not believe that Camp Kewaunee employees would fall into essential personnel. I believe that the Governor's intent behind keeping state parks, wildlife management areas, and open space staff on, on the clock and at- management areas, and open space staff on, uh, on the clock and at the parks is for the reason of public safety. Uh, when someone gets lost in a state forest, usually the local first responders, uh, may or may not know the park as well as those park supervisors or forest supervisors. Uh, here in the town of Hanson, um, the recreation director does not oversee open space, um, or will have as much knowledge as our first responders here in the town of Hanson. So that's my long-winded answer to saying no, Camp Kauani personnel are not essential to, uh, coming in at this time.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell?
I agree. I don't think that they would be considered essential.
Mr. Hickey?
I couldn't say it any better than Matt did.
And Mr. Blas?
I agree. I do think that, uh, this is a discussion for the future of the recreation directors', um, oversight down the road. And I think it should be much different than simply Camp Kauani. But for now, yes, not essential.
Okay. Um, okay. Um, I tend to agree, but I think the, um, devil's in the details, John. So, um, you know, I, I think what I'm hearing from everybody, based on what we know, based on what you've just read, that they aren't essential, uh, they're non-essential. And again, that doesn't mean they're not important. It's just the definition of essential versus non-essential. Um, is there any way that you could check with Kate on that to just make sure that we're not making, we're not interpreting that incorrectly?
Absolutely. I can do that tomorrow.
Okay. Um, and then, um, I will entertain a motion to extend, uh, the closure of the non-essential offices and buildings to comply with Governor Baker's orders to May 4th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
And Mr. Blas?
Aye.
And Laura Kemet, aye. Okay. Um, thanks, John. And accept March donations. I will entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second.
That was Matt, sorry.
And who's second, Kenny?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and roll call vote. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Blas?
Aye.
And Laura Kemet, aye. Okay, great. Uh, we've got a request, uh, the annual thermometer on Town Green for dollars for scholars. I will entertain a motion.
This is Matt. So moved?
Second. This is Kenny.
Okay, great. Roll call. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Blas?
Aye.
And Laura Kemet, aye. Uh, and then we've got appointments and resignations. I will, I think we can just take these all together, which is Board of Registars Marion Elms' term expires 3/31/23, Building Inspector Alternate Steve Solari, term to 6/30/21 expire, Old Colony Planning Council Representative Deb, Deb Petty for a term to expire 6/20/23, and I will entertain a motion.
Uh, before we do so, Laura, has everyone, um, just to stay in coordination with policy here that was set by the Board of Selectmen, has everyone either met, uh, John, um, for appointment?
Um, so it would be really the Board of Register person, right? Uh, John, have you met all of these people? Or are you in some way talked to them?
Um, on the Board of Registars, I have not met, um, Ms. Elms, but I have met the, uh, Building Inspector Alternate. I have met the, obviously I know Deb Petty, she's our planning director.
Okay.
And we should say that Marion Elms has been in this position a long time. So she is well-known.
With that said, I'll make a motion to approve this late. This is Matt.
Okay.
Second.
Jim.
Second.
Kenny.
Too late.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Blas?
Aye.
And Laura Kemet, aye. Okay, great. And, uh, vote on proposed revisions to the FY20 selectmen's calendar. And, um, John, can you just cue that up for us?
Uh, yeah, so the, the, uh, obviously with the changing of the, uh, of the votes for town meeting, uh, for the time of town meeting, I'm sorry, and the annual town election, um, then the selectmen's calendar would have to change based on, on those two dates. So I had proposed, uh, I had proposed some changes that, that were in the, uh, in your packet. Uh, I had for 4/14, I had a selectmen's meeting. 4/28, I had a selectmen's meeting and I moved the town accountant quarterly update to that date. And then 5/5 would be the, another selectmen's meeting where we close the warrants. 5/19 would be an elder affairs update. Uh, that was scheduled, um, I think it might have been tonight. Uh, so I'm, I'm hoping that we're back in business again back on May 19th and she, uh, she could come in and give an update. Uh, May 26th would be the, another selectmen's meeting where you sign the warrants and, um, the town accountant would give a fiscal year 21 update of wherever we are at that point. Um, the 27th would be the day where we post the special town meeting and the annual town meeting warrants. Actually, the, the constable would do that. Uh, then there'd be a meeting on June 2nd. June 9th, there'd be another meeting to have the town meeting preview. June 15th, and if needed, a second night of the 16th would be town meeting. June 27th would be the annual town election. June 30th would be, uh, a selectmen's meeting when you would reorganize the board. And then July 14th would be another selectmen's meeting where you would be voting on any, uh, Mass General laws, chapter 4433B, those are the line item transfers, uh, that need the signature of both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee in order to do.
Okay. All right. And so, thanks for coordinating all that. So I assume you've had to, you talked to Todd and the town clerk and all of that when you came up with these dates?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I will entertain a motion.
Uh, before we do, can I just confirm, I just read earlier that Tuesday, April 21st, there is a Board of Selectmen's meeting. I assume there is not.
Oh, oh, you mean on the announcements, Wes?
Yes.
Yeah. Good point.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, it depends on whether we, you know, vote, vote on this calendar. But I, I think, I think that was, um, based on what we knew at the time.
Uh, that, that was the old calendar and I didn't, I, I don't know whether you're going to vote for this new calendar or not. So what, what, uh, Selectman Blas said is technically correct unless you vote this new calendar, then obviously there won't be a meeting on the 21st.
Thank you.
And John, do, John, do you feel as though we need a meeting next week?
Uh, I, I, I don't think we need a meeting, no, but it, again, it's a-
I mean, we can, we, we can keep it on the calendar. I'm just trying to be thoughtful about, you know, the use of your time and Greer's time and, and everybody else. Um, and so, you know, if, if you think maybe for instance, like there'll be something to talk about with the school assessment or, you know, if you're expecting some, you know, well, we did just talk about, uh, you know, talking to Jean about the, you know, what, what she would do if people had a hardship. Um, you know, so we've got a couple of items, but, you know, I, I, we'll, we'll keep it on there. I do, I didn't mean to ask you that loaded question. I just was curious. Um, okay.
Yeah, I, what I did was I kept the, the same amount of meetings that we had on the original, um, the, the original calendar. I didn't want to cut any meetings because they, you know, I wanted to keep to the original calendars, a number of meetings. But obviously, if, if we don't need to meet, there isn't much happening other than the, uh, the, the treasurer-collector question, I don't think we would have to meet unless something drastic happened. But again.
Okay. I mean, we can always visit that later this week if, you know, see how she, how things evolve with Jean. Um, so I will, and, and, any other questions?
Moving the calendar as, uh, delivered to us by Mr. Stanbrook, not including April 21st.
Right. He didn't, he doesn't have April 21st on this new calendar, on the one that we're bringing presented in our packet.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Um, I'll entertain a second.
If, oh, are we done with discussion?
Well, we've got a motion on, no, no, certainly, you know, we've got a motion-
Okay. I'll second it. I'll second it. I'll-
Mr. Hickey?
Uh, I will second it, but then I would like to discuss before we vote.
Okay. Mr. Hickey?
Uh, so John, it's the same amount of meetings, um, getting ready for, you know, town meeting late in June. You're just changing the 21st to a different date later in the year. Am I correct?
Yes, that's what I was doing, yes. But now, but we're all, right now we're talking about whether we even need the 14th, I think.
Okay, personally, I don't think we do.
I'm just trying to think of everybody's, you know, I'm, I'm just, you know, I don't want to just meet for the sake of meeting, but, you know, but we'll, we'll, we'll call it later in the week. If we, if it doesn't seem like we've got a lot to meet about that, you know, and Mr. Stanbrook and, and Greer could spend their time doing other things, then we'll take a pass on it and we'll meet on the 28th. But probably we'll have to meet somewhere between now and the 28th. Um, so, uh-
Well, my, my thinking, Laura, I'm sorry to interrupt-
No, no, go ahead.
-was where we, we are all under home confinement, that it may be beneficial for everyone, um, if we started these meetings at 6 instead of 7.
Sure. Let's go around and talk about that. I don't have a problem. I, I, no, I don't have a problem with that because I'd like it to end earlier. I'm sure, I know you would too. Uh, Mr. Dyer, thoughts?
I don't have a problem with it, uh, as I'm home right now, yeah.
Mr. Mitchell?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. And Mr. Blas?
I'm good. And to add to the confusion though, I thought we were meeting next week for Mr. Sullivan and the tax postponement.
I, I couldn't quite hear everything you said, Wes. I'm sorry. Do, do my repeating that?
I thought, yes. I'm, I thought that we are meeting next week, April 14th, with Jean Sullivan and John Stanbrook to discuss the tax.
Yeah, yeah.
So it is, it was April 21st that we are not-
Yes, April 21st, yeah. April 21st got asked, but what we're going around asking now is would you be, um, open to, to me? Okay. And Mr. Stanbrook and, and, um, Ms. Getson, are you both okay with us changing it to 6?
Yeah, I don't-
Absolutely.
Yeah, we don't have a problem.
Okay. All right. That was a ringing endorsement, Greer. Um, okay, so, um, I'll entertain, well, let's take one motion and, and, yes, Mr. Hickey?
I, I just wanted to say in full disclosure, I am still working. So, um, you know, this would benefit me greatly.
Oh, a, as, as am I, but I don't get up at the ungodly hour you do. Um, so we've got a, a first and a second on the table. I'm going to do a roll call vote on, um, the calendar and then we'll do a roll call vote on changing the meeting time. And maybe we'll give it that some timeframe, like up June or something. I don't know. Well, you know, um, so Mr. Dyer on the, um, change, on the adopting the calendar as, as we've got in our packet.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye. I don't think we need a vote on the time change. I think we're all in consensus.
Okay. Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
And Mr. Blas?
Aye.
And Laura Kemet, aye. And you're right, Kenny. If we just, um, so can we just, um, probably, John, just say, I don't know, what are you guys thinking? Like, um, up through until right after Memorial Day and then we'll revisit it and see what kind of a crazy world we're in then, or?
Yes, that sounds great.
Okay. All right. So if, if you don't mind just kind of tweaking, um, so when you guys post that we've got the right time there. All right. Moving right along. Um, regional school assessment matter. Um, Mr. Stanbrook, I know you had a conversation, I believe, today with the superintendent and with the town administrator from Whitman. Um, and I don't know if there was anything else you wanted to share with us, but I'll lay it up to you and, and, um, we'll have that discussion about the regional school assessment.
Uh, yes, thank you. I did, I had a, a conference call with, uh, Whitman Town Administrator Frank Lineham and, uh, Superintendent, uh, Whitman Hansen, um, I want to say his last name properly, Jeff Simonak, I guess. Um, I thought it was very, uh, the discussion was frank and it was, I, I think we, uh, I think we got somewhere. Um, and I, I'm, I was hoping that maybe, uh, after the meeting tomorrow night, uh, we could kind of continue the discussions and see if we could go somewhere with that. I wanted to see if, maybe we could hold off on, and maybe I can, uh, maybe we could, you know, I, I wish we could meet in person. I think we'd do a lot better, but I, I think that it was productive. Um, and it was a, it was a nice discussion and I, I think it's useful if, um, to keep going that way. So I'm trying to say that the right way, but that's, that's where, I think, I think we finally sat, sat down and talked about, um, the issues properly, I think. And I, I think we, we have a potential of, um, you know, working together and I'd like to see if we could continue with that.
Okay. And, and I mean, you have some numbers to talk about. My understanding is that, um, there may have been, um, some pieces of the vote last week, uh, that the school committee took that, um, may cause them to have to revote, uh, the budget. Uh, I don't know that, uh, the vote's going to be different, but they may need to revote that. And, um, so we'll wait to see what comes out of that. Did you have an opportunity when you spoke to these two gentlemen to find out where Whitman is in terms of getting, um, a, a bit firmer on the offer that they have been talking about putting on the table, um, to, you know, for this fiscal year?
Uh, no, I have not, but I'm, like, like I said, I, I think that, um, we may be moving in the right direction. I'm-
Okay. And so I think, um, uh, perhaps, and again, you know, not to just find things to talk about next week if we, you know, when we do meet. Um, but, uh, perhaps what we would do is if we are not able to get closure, uh, from Whitman on what that offers, perhaps we could counter-propose that if they adopt an alternative method or continue to use the alternative method, um, if the schools do, that we would in turn, uh, offer up something, um, to, um, kind of ameliorate a bit, um, on that. And I, I, I don't know, uh, John, if you had any thoughts on that, but, um, you know, I, I think what we had talked about with Whitman was they had talked about potentially funding, um, a P, a curriculum piece and then some other piece. Um, and, you know, to kind of reduce the, our overall assessment. It would obviously reduce theirs as well, but they'd be paying, um, towards it. Um, and, in a similar vein, if, and so that's if the statutory method is used, which we, I don't want to go over that ad nauseam because we've talked about it way too much, but, uh, you know, it is what it is. Um, and, and we will, uh, handle it in conversations and in the regional agreement. Uh, but in terms of the, um, you know, the methodology, if the school committee were able to revote, uh, the, uh, assessment methodology, so the last vote they took was on the budget, but if we, they could revote the assessment methodology, perhaps Hanson could say, well, if you're using the al- alternative method, which is per pupil method, we'd be willing to give, and I don't know what that dollar amount is, John, but, um, some, we'd fund an item similar to they were willing to fund. If it was statutory, they were potentially willing to fund curriculum. And again, I don't know if they've taken votes, but this has been discussed and it's widely acknowledged. And I know you talked about it today with, um, with both of the gentlemen on the phone. Um, and I just throw that out there, John. I don't know if you've got any experience, thoughts, you know, on that. Um, and I'll, I'll kind of open up the line to you.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know any of the numbers that we could u- use, but just in general on the concepts, uh, uh- on the concepts, uh, um, you know, I, again, I'm, I'm throwing this out as just a, an idea that something like special education, which is, you know, inherently volatile, you can have a couple move-ins and, and it could be very expensive, you know, six figures expensive, um, and then maybe, you know, the, and it's, it's difficult to predict, it's, it's, and, and you're required to fund it, and it could really throw things off. I mean, I, again, I, I'm not in a position to, to, to bargain or, or come up with anything, but something like that, an inherently volatile thing that you can't know ahead of time, um, would seems like an idea where maybe perhaps we could, um, you know, offer some sort of relief if that, if, you know, if that type of cost were to come down the pike.
Okay, um, all right, well, we'll, um, we'll take that under advisement and see, um, where the school committee lands tomorrow night and see what your conversations are, um, with Frank and Jeff and, um, and circle back. And I hope we get an invite pretty soon to start having a conversation about, uh, the regional agreement too, because we kind of need to, to get that popping. Um, John, um, I will turn it over to you for the town administrators' report.
Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, Selectman Hickey, I'll try to speak as quickly as I possibly can, and I know it's getting late. Um, so, uh, at the last meeting, uh, you authorized me to sign the warrants for the town, uh, up until May first, so, and I was going to give you an update of what I had, you know, what I had done, um, in between meetings, pretty much. So, uh, I signed the following warrants on behalf of the Board of Selectmen since the last meeting, uh, dated three twenty-six twenty, warrant number thirty-nine for five-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-one-fifty-four-eighty-seven. It was a vendor warrant, again, that's a larger amount of money, but that was because two-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars and twenty-five cents was for South Shore Vocational, uh, Schools Assessment for the quarter, and a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents of that was also because of the monthly health insurance bill. So it was a large amount for that warrant, but those were two large amounts in it. The rest were, you know, various and sundry other things. Uh, another, um, warrant that I signed was dated three twenty-six twenty, which is warrant number thirty-nine PR, that's the payroll warrant. That was for a hundred-and-forty-thousand-and-twenty dollars and eighty-one cents. Another warrant I signed, uh, March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty, warrant thirty-nine WH, that's a payroll, payroll withholding warrant for twenty-five-thousand-five-ninety-one-nineteen. Again, that's federal taxes, state taxes, things that we withhold from, um, employees' pays, uh, uh, pay, paycheck. Uh, I signed a warrant dated four-two-twenty, which was warrant number forty, that was a vendor warrant for forty-nine-thousand-eighteen dollars and eighty-four cents. I signed another warrant dated four-two-twenty of warrant forty PR, that's a payroll warrant for a hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-nineteen dollars and ninety-two cents. And I did, I signed the final warrant of dated four-two-twenty, uh, warrant forty WH, which is a payroll withholding warrant for twenty-seven-thousand-two-thirty-two-sixty-four. Um, also under new business, uh, or old business, uh, just business in general, uh, our ADA self-assessment, uh, our winning bidder of KMA LLC of Newton, uh, wants to continue rolling on that grant by having all department heads participate in some ADA training. I'm working with, uh, a town planner, Deb Peby, Petty, and, um, and our IT person, uh, Ryan, to try to set that up, to how we get everyone together on a, on a call, um, to get some required department head training, and there'll be more to follow on that, but that is moving on. Uh, again, the Whitman Hansen Regional School Operational and Comparative Audit Deadline passed. Uh, we, I, I said this at the last meeting, we have received one bid, and again, I haven't been able to meet with the Whitman Town Administrator to go over it. Um, this has been on the back burner, burner unfortunately with what we're, when, what we've been dealing with. Um, Liberty Street completes, sorry, Liberty Street Complete Streets Project, it has bid, has been bid, the bid results were opened, uh, the apparent three lowest bidders were identified, uh, we should be able to get rolling on that, uh, as soon as possible. Um, we're going through the, uh, the bid documents now to make sure that we received everything that, that is required on the bid. Uh, once we do that, uh, I'll be assigning the award and we'll be getting rolling on it. Um, the sale of Zero Liberty Street Rebids Deadline was, was Friday, March twenty-seventh at ten AM. Uh, because the town hall was closed, I had, I held the bid opening outside the building in the lower parking lot area, instead, instead of being in the building, uh, we all maintained social distancing requirements at all times, and the public did have the opportunity to witness the opening. Uh, we, we received one bid for eighty-one-thousand-one-hundred dollars from Mr. Timothy McQuarrie of four thirty-seven East Washington Street in Hanson. Mr. McQuarrie is the apparent high bidder. Again, this is one where we're selling properties, so we're taking the high bid as opposed to when we're purchasing services, we accept the low bid. Um, Mr. McQuarrie is the apparent high bidder. I'll be sending out the award letter to him shortly. Um, EverSource is sending out letters, uh, to, uh, residents regarding scheduled vegetation maintenance on the transmission right of way. Uh, they'll be removing trees along the power lines, um, along their right of way, and they'll be marking trees with an X. They'll be out there in bucket trucks, they've got climbing crews, they'll be all over, uh, cutting the trees down. Um, just wanted to make sure the residents were aware of that, that they, you know, they have the right to cut trees down on their right of way, um, and they are going to be out there doing that. Uh, the highway director submitted a potential cost savings of twenty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents, uh, for going to the Southeastern Regional Services Group or Sursage Contracts. Uh, the estimated time for preparing each bid was, that, that they usually do without, uh, you know, over at the highway department is, uh, two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and ten cents per bid, and there are twelve bids each year. So that calculated savings alone i- is about twenty-six-thousand-seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents, and again, the cost of participation in the Sursage Program for a full year for the town is forty-one-hundred dollars. Um, IT Director Ryan McGonigal and I have been working on setting up the town's Facebook page and linking it to the town's website. Um, I've had some delays in setting up the town's Facebook account, uh, because Facebook is still verifying my identity as a, as a town employee. Um, Ryan and I are gonna be researching ways to try to move around that obstacle and get the town's Facebook page, uh, uh, account going, uh, so that there'll be more to, coming on that soon. Um, and I was also contacted by, uh, Kevin Tochi from Whitman Hansen Cable to do a video update interview with him. Um, people tell me that I have a face that was made for radio, but I'll work with what I have. Uh, I initially set it up for last week, but that did not happen, so I'm hoping to get something rolling on that very soon. And I'd just like to thank everybody finally, just that's working for the town for their, their strength and resiliency they've shown through the, well, this crisis, uh, fire department, police department, highway department, transfer station, board of health, town of hall workers, water department, anyone I may have inadvertently omitted, they've been doing a fantastic job. This is very, uh, very stressful time and they've really risen to the task. Um, you know, these, they're saying now that these next days are gonna be the most difficult, but I, I think we're gonna get through this together. So thank you very much.
Well, you've done a fantastic job. I think we've, you know, I'll let you know that, um, tonight, but, um, you know, you and Greer have really been amazing. You've, uh, shown some great leadership, um, during this time and, and we thank you. Um, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, may the God and Satan, I've got a question, please.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, I, I want to clear, what is the town Facebook page? When did we, did, when did the Board of Selectmen, did we ever vote on a Facebook page?
Yes, we voted to make that a, one of our goals, uh, for, uh, our town administrator, um, for the purposes of, um, sending out updates, town updates, not, uh, not a dialogue, it will just be in for informational purposes, when he posts, uh, when we post meetings, uh, when there are notices posted, all that type of thing.
I thought that, I thought that was all going onto our website.
I'm sorry?
I thought that was going onto our website.
Right, that's what he, that's, that's what he's saying, is the website is gonna link to the Facebook, so every time a, a change is made to the website, like not every, any change, but like, um, agendas are posted or, um, you know, in this particular situation with like COVID nineteen, anytime maybe John would post that, uh, town hall was closed because it's a state of an emergency, those types of things would post to the website and then automatically post out to Facebook without any commenting, um, just as an informational post.
I don't know, I mean, I, I personally, you have, you and I both have Facebook pages, but, I mean, I'm thinking, I remember Teddy does it, I know Matt does it, Jim never uses it, I'm pretty sure Greer said she doesn't have one, does John Stanbrook have a Facebook page?
It's not, it's not gonna be a John, it's not John Stanbrook is posting it to town. Like right now, Hanson Fire has one, uh, Hanson Police has one, the Board of Health has one, um, so, and I think concert, town of conservation, the conservation and maybe other, those are the only ones, oh, Camp Kawani, um, they've all got them, but there isn't anything for, um, the selectmen's offices, nobody posting agendas, uh, updates, anything that John needs. I don't think it's gonna be, well, I mean, during the COVID thing, it probably will be fairly, maybe not frequent, but, you know, uh, it will be out there, but during the ordinary course, I don't think there'll be anything, but this was part of our discussion that we had had about engaging the public, about getting information out there. This was one of the goals that was set for our town administrator.
All right, but, and if I had known about this as a Facebook page, I know I would have voted no. I, I'm really against, as far as I'm concerned, Facebook page is a social engagement and it's not, the town hall is not a social entity, and the town hall does not have an ego. I'm.
Okay, I, we can, we can certainly take this, um, up for discussion. Uh, he hasn't gone live with it, uh, but I would encourage you to look at the surrounding towns who all have Facebook pages, um, where they, uh, are getting information out to citizens. We are getting, um, a lot of feedback that people are looking for the town to give them more information about town meetings, about meeting agendas and that type of thing, but we can definitely put this on our agenda for, um, our next meeting if you'd like, and we can take a vote on whether we should be doing a town Facebook page.
Please, thank you.
Any other, um, discussion? Mr. Dyer? And not necessarily just about this, but about anything that Mr. Stanbrook went over.
Nope, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell?
Nope, I, I would like to discuss that too, um, on the agenda, because I know we did speak about trying to get information out to the public, but I don't necessarily remember the word Facebook, so, but, you know, I could have missed something, but yeah, I'd like for us to, um, put that on the agenda and discuss that as well. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hickey?
I do, and it's not about Facebook, um, but with, and John and Greer, uh, you guys can help me with this, and I, I was gonna bring it up when we were talking about essential and non-essential employees. Um, the reason town hall is open on Tuesday nights, when we don't have a selectmen's meeting, is for the public to come in, because that's an opportunity that they have if they're working during the day and can't come in. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so if town hall is closed to the public on non-selectmen nights, um, I, I, and I, you know, I, and I only thought of this when we were going over the agenda, um, why do the essential employees need to be there on a Tuesday night if the public can't come in?
I don't think they do. Are, are they, are all the essential employees there tonight, John, or is it just you and Greer because we've got a meeting?
Uh, Greer and I are the only ones in the building right now.
Well, it's nine o'clock now, but were essential employees there till eight tonight, John?
No, they weren't. It's, it's just us, um, since six, maybe?
Well, and I mean, I guess I'm asking the board, but I, I don't see a reason why you and Greer need to be there, uh, you know, on a Tuesday night if, if we're not having a meeting.
No, I, I totally agree. I, I mean, Matt, Matt, what do you think?
I, I agree with Jim. Uh, there's no reason for them to be physically in town hall, uh, they should be home with their families and, um, as long as they can conduct business from their residence.
Uh, well, I mean, if the, um, on a Tuesday night, you would expect, yeah, I mean, after, are you saying you'd still expect them to be online after six on a Tuesday night even if they're putting in their regular hours during the week, or?
No, if they're fulfilling their, their hour requirement, but what I meant is for meetings, if they're, if they have a meeting, I would, I would hope that they'd be available.
Right.
Yep, okay, Mr. Mitchell?
Right, right. I think that they should be there till eight o'clock every night. No, I agree with Matt and Jim.
Good point, Mr. Mitchell. Uh, Mr. Blas?
I'm fine, do we need a whistle?
I don't think so. I mean, I, I think would, there seems to be a general consensus, can, you know, consensus.
I'm good.
Yeah. Um, okay, so I think unless we have a meeting, John, you know, you and Greer, just regular business hours, you know, we, we know you're gonna, you're putting in your hours and then some, so, um, okay, um, any other discussion? Uh, Mr. Blas?
No, I'm good, there's.
Okay, all right, so, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Matt, so moved.
So moved.
Second, Kenny.
Nice try, Matt.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, uh, Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Blas?
Aye.
And Laura Kemet, aye. Uh, well done, guys. Thank you very much, John and Greer, and stay safe, everybody.